Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Culling.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy. Here. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variance from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on February 27th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There is one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to a combination, I'm sorry, just absences, no combinations there, only five members are present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to two in favor of an application will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants, who are scheduled to come before us that night, the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. That next available date for any applicant who would like to request that continuance this evening is February 21st. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there is no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say, "I do." Thank you. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case this evening?
Our first case is 2018-Z6, 3612 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a special use for a medical dental clinic large to permit the operation of a dental office.
Hey, welcome.
Hello. My name is Ted Worley. I was the one that submitted the application on behalf of...
I'm Dr. Jim Limperas.
Hi.
General dentist here.
Welcome.
So, the office is for Dr. Limperas.
Mm-hmm.
He is asking that a special use be granted. Special uses are required for dental medical uses over 2,000 square feet.
Right.
The space chosen, the building infrastructure appears to be well-suited for the purpose, and the location appears to be well-suited to his use.
What was it before? Was it just office?
It was a plastic surgeon.
Right, so it was medical already?
Yeah.
Okay. How many employees are you expecting to have at any one time there?
So, there will be one full-time dentist myself, one associate, so she's more like a part-time dentist, and then, I think we have, I don't remember. Two full-time employees and four part-time employees.
Right.
Rarely of which, they're all there at the same time.
So, at a maximum, at any one time, how many do you expect to be there?
Maybe six maximum.
Six max.
And that might be like one day a week.
And that would also, and that would be serving how many...
Patients.
Patients, yeah. Six patients, three patients?
No, no, because two of them are like front desk reception, so, four.
Four. And I know there's a lot of parking there, you know, the number of employees and customers leads to the parking. The building is, is it, would you be filling it up, then? Would it be 100% occupied, and would you be running into any parking issues, do you think?
I'm, I'm not, I think it would be 100% with me going in there.
Mm-hmm.
All I can tell you in terms of the parking, sometimes I think it's, I drive by and I'll stop by various times of the day on my way home, and I'll see, I'll go in and I'll count, when it looks kind of full, but I'll still count 12 or 13 spots.
Yeah, I think it's pretty well parked there.
Yeah.
So, all right, any other questions?
Do we know how long the plastic surgeon office was there?
I'm afraid I don't. Sorry.
No, they've been vacant for over a year.
All right.
There have been plastic surgeons there for years and years, though.
All right.
Is that experience?
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Are you currently, do you currently have an office in Willmet?
I do, in Westlake Plaza.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just up the street.
I see.
And I'm kind of outgrowing my space, and I was looking for something a little bit bigger.
That's good.
And better parking.
And better parking. All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Everybody's...
Under control.
All right. If there's anything else you want to say, let's add it now, and I'm going to see if there's anybody that wants to speak either for or against the case. Anything else? No? No? All right, is there anybody that wants to speak either for or against this applicant? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a member who'd like to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Sermon.
I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for the medical dental clinic large to permit the operation of the dental office at 3612 Lake Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted. The zoning board will determine if the use will run with the land or the use that will run with the use.
Yeah, it'll run with the use. All right, I have a second, Mr. Boyer, thank you very much. Mr. Sermon, your motion.
Okay. I think previously it was a medical office, you know, you're just switching to a dental. I think there's plenty of parking, and it's nice to see that you'll be able to fill up the whole space, so...
Mr. Boyer?
It makes sense. I think it meets all the standards for a special use.
All right, any other additional comments? No? All right.
Yeah, I agree. It's pretty, pretty straightforward, so, looking forward to having you expand, another expanding business, right?
All right, let's take a quick vote.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Culling.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes yes as well. It's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Their meeting is on the, I wrote it down, I lost it. The 27th. I would need either one of you to come up and just sign this letter acknowledging the dates and your presence, and then leave one for us.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-6.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
May I ask a good question?
Sure.
Do you recommend we attend the village board meeting?
You know, you got a full favorable vote here. It's going to go on what they call their consent agenda. So, in the outside chance that there's a member of that board that wants to remove it from the consent agenda to discuss it, it's going to just get waved right on through. So, if you want to come, just, I mean, you'd be here for like 15 minutes to make sure that they said yes, and nobody pulled it off the consent agenda. Once the consent agenda is voted positively, you just, you can leave, because then you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to, though. But if you want to see how government works. All right, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Our next case is 2018-Z5, 1740 Lake Avenue. This is a request for a three-foot fence pier foundation setback variation to permit the installation of fence piers.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jill Zinkowitz. I am the representative from St. Joseph's School. Oh, I'll let you introduce yourself.
My name is Jim O'Brien. We're helping St. Joseph's with the implementation of this plan before you tonight.
So, basically, as we've discussed in previous meetings, we're looking to replace the backstop, the rather old chain-link fence backstop right at the corner there of Lake and Ridge with a monument sign. It was my understanding that it looks okay to replace the chain-link fence itself even though it's on village property, but I, my understanding is the issue in question is the stone and brick pillars that will anchor the fence itself. It seems to be coming in a little too far. So, there has been a request for, on the village's behalf, to get an additional three feet under the St. Joseph's property line. However, that's going to start to encroach a bit into the parking lot. You know, we have obviously a school, very busy parking lot, we have events in that area, too, so we're proposing that we can keep it at the, is it the 1.3 feet to the north?
You want to keep it on your property line?
Yes.
On the village property?
Correct. This is entirely will be on St. Joseph's. They're asking for the masonry piers to be right on the property line as opposed to the three-foot setback.
Right. Any questions about this?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand. Could you go to 1.4? To the north, there's a east-west fence proposed and part of the north-south, correct?
Can you repeat that? Sorry, one more time?
The proposed fence runs mainly along east-west on the south side of the lot and north-south on the west side of the lot, correct?
Correct.
So, is the, are you saying the edge of the pier will abut the property line? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, a lot along Lake Avenue, that's correct.
And on Ridge, it will be setback?
It will. We have a little bit more room on that side.
How far will it be setback on Ridge?
I'll get to the detailed plan. We don't have the exact engineering run-out, so I don't want to say something that, I don't want to say nine inches when it's six or so, but it will be entirely on St. Joe's, St. Joseph's property along opposite Treasure Island, and I think that's the line you're referring to.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And not within the setback area?
Not within the setback area.
And currently, the fence is right on the lot line?
Currently, the fence is actually on village property. It's been there since the '40s.
Okay.
As we know, this is a landmark property. It's been there forever, and so everyone's kind of quite used to the fence, you know, and that's the way it's been. And I think, as she stated clearly before, the reason that we would like to put the piers right on the property line is otherwise, they would have a tricky mess with reconfiguring their entire parking lot for the school and the church, and it would, it would be considerable. And I do, and I would like to speak on behalf of, I really think this is going to be amazing beautification of that corner, and I think this is just going to be a dynamite kind of secondary entrance actually into the village of Willmet proceeding, you know, east from the east.
True.
Sounds like adverse possession. I don't know if the village owns that property anymore.
Shh.
We limit it to one lawyer per zoning board.
We humored Lisa with saying, "Well, since the fence has been there for so long, can't we just kind of have what we have?" She said, "Not really," so...
I have a quick question on the drawing on, was 1.5, you know, it's kind of a close-up of the corner. The double line that makes kind of the diamond shape kind of almost around, is that representing anything? Because the double line going off to the side, going off to the north and going off to the east represents the fence, right? You see what I'm saying? What is the double line kind of represent that comes all the way out and forms the spearhead, so to speak?
Oh, I think the first, I think this first line here must, is the pattern in the pavement, probably.
The one that's abutting the sidewalk?
Like this, you know.
Oh, out there, yeah.
Yeah, what is that? Is that, so, oops, so that creates this spear point like this, this double line? What does that represent?
That's just score joints in the pattern for the concrete.
Okay.
In other words, it's not a structure or anything, it's just a delineated line in the hardscaping.
Okay, understood.
All right, any other questions?
And these are just schematic drawings right now, right?
Correct, that's correct. There would be full submittal drawings going forward for the permit. If we get approval, then we would be submitting drawing to the building department for full, for a permit.
Sure. Any other questions?
Is there a bus stop along this stretch, or is that on the other side of Ridge?
A public bus stop, I mean? There's the one, there's one right in front of Ridgeview Restaurant there going east.
East.
And the one going west?
I think it's also on the other side of the street.
Is it right on the other?
It is, on the other side of Ridge.
It's right there, cut out, yeah. It's right where the driveway is on Lake Avenue. There's that cutout out of the parkway? Isn't that where the bus?
Oh, right, the one right, the one east of the light, yes, yes.
So, there is a bus stop on, that's adjacent to this parking lot on Lake.
So, that will be shown on 1.4, that's a little on the bottom of the top of the page.
Yes, the bottom right.
The fence would go up to that bus stop inlet, okay. Another, there's a question on this drawing, 1.6.
The drive somewhere like right in here. Is the bus stop up here at the corner?
Pier along Ridge.
Or is it along here, kind of, oh, here's the drive cutout it shows.
Shows 20 inches.
Isn't the bus stop back in here?
On the drawing, 1.6, 20 inches high.
That's the school.
Is it? And I think the, aren't the piers intended to be higher than 20 inches? What dimension are the piers?
Well, there's two, the very first...
Four foot four.
The very first two piers that are by the entry planter are going to, those will be lowered, because the fence is actually going to taper down.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you. I'm out done. Oh, I see, on 1.7, it shows tapering.
Any other questions?
That's right.
All right. Anybody else? No? All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the case and ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion. Mr. Culling, thank you.
Move to recommend granting a request for a three-foot fence pier foundation setback variation to permit the installation of fence piers at 1740 Lake Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer? Thank you. Mr. Culling, your motion.
Oh, yeah, as long as I've, I've been coming and going and living in Willmet, I mean, this has been there, if it's already been 1.3 feet on the village property and you're going to be moving it back, you know, there will be a pickup of the 1.3 feet. I think there is a hardship if they have to reconfigure things in the parking lot for pickup and drop-off and what have you.
And lose spaces.
And so, you know, I, then I think it'll look significantly improve a chain-link fence look, so I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer?
The only thing I would add is, it is a unique situation, having a school in a residential district, and I think it meets all the standards of review, particularly, in this situation, the strict application of the code prevents a reasonable use. Putting up a fence to enclose your school, a parking lot, and yard is a reasonable use. So, I think it meets all the standards.
Anybody else? No?
Yeah, I saw no problem with this. I thought the main positive that we're all going to benefit from this is the beautification of that corner, so, yeah, I too support it. I think it meets the standards of review. Let's take a quick vote.
Mr. Culling.
Yes.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes yes as well. So, that's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board. Meeting's the 27th of the month. You might want to be there, but it's going to be on the consent agenda, as I explained in the last applicant. The 27th, it'll be 7:00.
7:30.
I apologize, 7:30. If one of you, Ms. Zinkowitz, could you come up and sign this for me? And take one, sign one.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-5.
Second. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you. Thank you, you guys have a good evening. All right, when you're ready.
Next case is 2018-Z4, 4080 Bunker Lane. This is a request for a special use for an accessory living unit and a 22.7-foot front yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition and accessory living unit.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'm Mark Landau, this is Gigi, and our request is a special use for accessory living unit attached to our home, and we're infringing on the setback by 22 feet, 22.7 feet from Bunker Lane. We bought this, I bought this house about two and a half years ago. I love this house. I know if you know this neighborhood, it's part of that Northwestern that owned the golf course and the lots back there. This is an English-type cottage, and we've done some work on it already, mud room and a sunroom, and so we feel like, you know, we're improving the house as it is, and then Gigi's mother is 88 years old, and she's getting a little more fragile, and she lives over an hour away on the south side, so we're hoping to create a unit attached to the house that she could buy there with us. And we have, the house is on a quarter of an acre, and the lot's kind of in odd shape, so the only place we could really do this would be to the north, which would be away from all of our neighbors, and we'd also, we would use the existing garage for the living space and then create another garage. And the garage we have right now is kind of small, and even with two compact cars, it's hard to negotiate it. So, that's why we're proposing just another two feet to the garage. We talked to our neighbors, everybody's on board, and they don't have a problem with it. We feel like it's going to improve the neighborhood, and we're at the end of the cul-de-sac there, and we've already planted pine trees to kind of make it blend in even better there, so...
All right, any questions?
So, there's no front yard setback variation, okay. So, it's requesting 22, and what is it?
It should be 40. Normally, it's 40.
Oh, okay. And that's, Lisa, that's based, that's based on the, the house is on the block?
Are you current in compliance?
Yeah.
Currently, you are a 40-foot setback.
Yes, yeah, everything that we've done so far is in compliance, but this is the first time we've infringed.
So, it's the new garage that puts you into that space, that 40-foot thing?
Yes, yeah.
We have a, did you guys get this, the rendition, the architect's rendition?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we did. Did you talk to any of your neighbors?
We talked to all of them, and we, it's, we're fortunate, we have some great neighbors there, and the four homes that are closest to us, they, we walked over there, showed them the pictures and the blueprints and discussed with them, and they're all happy with it, they're all...
The only one would be even concerned would be the one directly across the street, right?
Yes, mm-hmm, and we went over there with a bottle of wine, and they said...
They gave us their blessing.
Those, those neighbors and then anybody teeing off number seven?
Right, well, there are a bunch of trees there, so that's, fortunately, that protects us on 99% of the golf law.
So, you know, I just, I found it interesting, reading through the accessory living use standards. So, you know, you annually have to come and renew for this.
Oh, okay.
For the accessory living unit.
Okay, as long as she's there.
Is that right here?
But not before the, not before the board.
No, just to the, to you.
Right.
To staff.
Okay.
You don't have to come to us, but you have to annually renew with staff.
Okay.
Just to show that she's still living there, because there's the age limit for someone living in that accessory living unit, right, of, where is it, like 70?
No, 62 or 65.
62, resident, person... It's in here.
Yeah.
So, what happens in the future?
So, if the next, if the next purchaser of that home does not meet these criteria, they have to remove the, like, the kitchen, basically, so that it's no longer a living unit.
So, we could make it like a TV room or something like that, or in the future?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You just, it just can't be a living unit.
Right, got it.
A dwelling unit, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Any other questions? There's a lot of studying going on here.
Yeah, that's a, it's a unique request.
It's a very unique request, yeah.
We haven't had a request like this in years.
Well, we had, we had, I asked Lisa about the, you remember 625 Park Avenue, where there was a unit above the garage?
Yes, I had that exact same thought.
Yeah.
But as Lisa explained, that is a separate building.
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, it does not, is that correct, Lisa? I'm paraphrasing, you send me a nice response. I'm paraphrasing, you send me a nice response.
Right, that would not have qualified as an accessory living unit, that is just a non-conforming use.
All right, 'cause this is in the same structure as the principal dwelling unit, that this becomes the accessory dwelling unit.
And you're not allowed to have a separate entrance for this?
No separate entrance, okay. All right.
Yeah.
So in other words, not a front door or something in the front of the, yeah, got it.
And why is that, Lisa, just to kind of reduce?
Maintain the single family appearance.
Yeah, okay. That's what we thought, yeah.
All right, any other questions? No, no, no?
And they're well within the FAR?
Oh, yeah.
They are, yeah.
That's a big lot.
You got a golf course right next to it.
It's, I think, you know, if you looked at, where is it? Number one point four? It shows the front yard setback, the dotted line across there.
I see it, yeah.
And that's really the, because it's forty feet.
Got it, that's the issue.
That's, that's the big issue aside from the accessory living unit. So I'm gonna ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Seeing no one rushing up, any other questions? We're all set. Thank you very much. I'm gonna close the case and ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion. Mr. Boyer, thank you for doing the heavy lifting tonight.
In regards to case number twenty eighteen Z zero four, I move recommend, I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for an accessory structure and a twenty-two point seven foot front yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story addition and accessory living unit on the property at forty eighty bunker lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Boyer, your motion.
Initially, when reading this, my off-the-cuff thought was, you know, it's gonna be a difficult decision. But after reading through everything and visiting the site, it, it makes sense. I think it meets all the standards. In particular, it's a lot shape, the siding of the home and the unique location at the end of the road. And it, adjacent to the golf course, all of those factors, I think, play into my decision of feeling this, this meets all the standards and it'll have no adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I agree.
All right, any other comments?
No, this is, this is a unique situation and normally we would be much more concerned about this large variation. But this is unique, as has been described.
Yeah, I agree. I just, being at the end of the cul-de-sac there, abutting the golf course, the impact of the structure where it's being placed is really, it's not impacting anybody. Except maybe the neighbor across the street being, you know, twenty feet close to their house, but they're across the street and they've got the large setback as well. So they seem to be in favor, at least they didn't write a letter against it or come to the meeting to say they were against it. So my, my first blush, I was, was the accessory living unit, not wanting this to, you know, become almost a townhome feel. But then reading through the requirements to qualify for it and looking at the plans closer, I felt like this really met everything.
Right, and initially thought it was gonna be a living space over the garage, the new garage. And then once I understood what they were requesting, it, it made sense, it fit everything.
Because there's a minimum size that they had to meet, so it's not like a closet, they have to be at least six hundred square feet, I think it was. And, you know, the age requirements and, and then the, the annual notification that the person is still there. And then when the, when the property would change hands, someone has to also qualify in order for it to work, so. I would add that I think a request like this on a traditional Wilmette lot would be much more difficult.
Yo, agreed. All right, let's take a quick vote on this.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's gonna go as a positive recommendation of Village Board, twenty-seventh of the month. At your case, I would say you may wanna come, just in case there's additional questions. But it's gonna be on the consent agenda, it may be over real fast. But yours is a pretty unique request in the village, so there may be some comments or questions, but it should be pretty, pretty straightforward. If one of you could come up and just sign this letter and take the other one with you and then you're done for the evening. Thank you guys for coming.
I move to recommend granting, I'm sorry, not that, so, do we read that?
It is on page five.
Where do we?
No, you just take that one, thank you.
Right?
No.
Where is it?
So we'll make it up. We're looking for the, give the chairman the directive to.
So I move the authorize the chairman prepare the report recommendation for zoning board of appeals for case number twenty eighteen Z zero four?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. You ready?
Okay. Our next case is twenty seventeen Z sixty-three, two thirty-eight Kilpatrick Avenue. This is a revised request for a seven hundred and six point four seven square foot total floor area variation, a variation to exceed the first floor height limit, a one point zero five foot side yard setback variation and a three point one three foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a substantial addition and remodel that is classified as a new home.
Welcome back.
Good evening, thank you for rehearing us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Can I, I'm gonna, all right, Lisa just notified me that both you guys came in late, so I need to swear you in. So give me one second. No, don't be sorry, you're fine. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do. I do.
Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, good evening, thank you again for rehearing our case. We listened to your suggestion as the house is, I mean, large, we reduce it by over two hundred feet, we revise the setbacks. As I explained last time, our family has grown, so we need extra space. So we are very happy to live in Wilmette, this is a wonderful neighborhood. After a lot of consideration, the main issue for us is that the cost, the construction cost, I, we did a lot of calculations. And then if we can keep part of the house and then we worked very hard to model it in the way that it would be convenient and also keep the existing, keep the foundation particularly, would reduce our cost and it would have a good house for us. The request for variance is now less than the basement. Basement is existing, we, it's a, last time, I'm, maybe there was a sort of a point that, and I explained that the basement is not really a habitable area, especially over summer. It is very humid in our neighborhood, we have a lot of flooding in our streets. And then.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Our technical advisor is telling us that you need to speak more into the microphone. I apologize. The two people that are watching, someone must've called in and complained.
So the existing basement is now used as a playground for our kids. We want to keep it the way it is and it's not really a habitable area, that was the concern last time. Basically, we are requesting that you grant us the variance for the basement. Actually, we are asking for about forty square feet less than the basement, existing basement. And that is the situation, we revised the plan, the plan is over two hundred, smaller, footage is smaller. We revised the setbacks, the setbacks are smaller now. So basically, the main request is that you give us the basement, consider the basement as the basement. The current, the way we designed the house is not going to have a basement. We're gonna keep the crawl space. And, I mean, this other option would be to just demolish the house and build a house. It would be not only more cost to me and my family and also would be more disturbance to the neighborhood. I mean, we can, we can do that, I mean, we can, we don't need to come to the board. We can demolish the house easily, but it would be about hundred fifty thousand dollar more to demolish and lay a foundation.
So I have actually a couple of questions. So, let me just, hold on, demo, house. I just wanna clarify a couple of things. So the current house is a bi-level, so you walk in and then you can walk down, what is it, about five steps, six steps to the lower level, right? Which is the basement?
About six steps, yes.
Right. And then you have the, the living area, which is dining room, kitchen, you know, living room area. And you walk up another six steps?
Yes.
To another, to the three bedrooms?
Yes.
Kind of like that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the main, that's the layout of the house existing.
Yes.
So when you, just wanna confirm, when you, when you, when you build the addition, there's gonna be no new basement? The crawl, the crawl, you have a crawl space?
Yes.
All right, so the crawl space?
Stays.
Exa, existing stays?
Yes.
And then the basement as it exists stays?
Yes.
All right.
The house will not have any more basement. I mean, the, the existing would be the basement.
Okay. And Lisa, is my math accurate that if we remove the square footage of the existing basement, that the total square footage of this house, this project is about thirty-nine ninety-one? So it's, the total square footage of the new project is underneath what they're allowed?
Yes.
Yep.
And if you tore down this house and built a new house, would you put in a basement?
Of course.
You put, you put in a basement?
Yes, I, I mean, I, yes, we would, I mean, houses now.
I mean, we're now, you know, you're not, I know you're not tearing this down, right? You're, I see your plans, this is what you're going for. But if, if we suspend reality?
Of course.
Put a basement, put a basement.
Yeah, of course, yes.
So if you put a new house in, you're gonna put a new basement?
Yes, I mean.
How deep would that basement be?
It would be eight foot six high ceiling, twenty feet.
Eight foot six high ceiling?
Yes.
So you'd have to dig down another, so the, with the footings and everything else and the new concrete, so you're nine, nine, ten feet down?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We need to dig, yeah, I mean, same as any, anybody who built a house, I look.
No, no, I'm talking about if you tore down this house.
I'm gonna tear the house down, which I'd much rather not to do, because it would be cost. But if I do that, then yes, of course.
Okay.
I'd rather not, I'd very much not to go that route. I would, that's the reason I'm here.
All right.
You refer to this as a basement, but it is really not a basement.
It's a lower, they call it a bi-level house.
Right, split level.
Split level.
And there are many in the neighborhood.
It's not a full basement.
It's not a basement. It's not considered a basement, is that correct, Lisa? This is, this is, it's counted as area.
Right, because of the height of the first floor above it.
Yeah, we are, we are above one foot above.
Right.
And what is the ceiling? I know you answered this last time. What is the ceiling height in that area? Which one? In the lower level? Lower level is about seven, less than eight feet, seven, six. Just, just meet the code requirement.
If I raise my hand, I can touch the ceiling.
Are you seventeen, huh?
I am, I am about five from six, so I can touch the ceiling.
Did you answer Michael's question?
Did I answer your question?
Actually, I don't think I answered.
Okay, yeah, so if you take out the existing basement space, the proposed is like thirty-nine ninety-nine, which is under the four thousand allowed.
Thank you.
So I, I've got a couple of questions for you. And this, in the booklet, if you go to one point one seven, which is your demolition plan?
Yes.
And one point one six, so can you explain to me, you're taking out most of the foundation?
Is the, no. Can I answer? Just, I go. I'm sure if they were moving the floor or the whole.
That's, yeah, that's my question. So, go ahead and tell me what the plan is.
Okay, this, if you look at, I'm trying to, I just lost it.
So it's one point one six and one point one seven?
There we go. This picture, this is existing.
So why don't you put that down on the table? Because there's that overhead camera that'll show it. See the table to the, to your left?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
There we go. There, now it's on the overhead.
Oh, perfect, oh, nice.
Can move it higher. Oh, nice.
All right.
Okay, good. Okay.
This is existing.
Yes.
Remain as is. This is existing, it's gonna be taken out.
Okay. So it's just, it's just that L shape of the foundation that's coming out?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the second picture is partitions or interior.
So that's, that's, okay. I, I was not clear what was coming out, what was staying.
Yes.
So my next question to you is, you talk about reducing the setbacks. Can you tell me what is the change in the plan? So I know you brought it in from the rear, right? From the west, or from the east to the west, you shortened that leg a little.
The entire south wall, fifty-one feet approximately, two feet pushed into the east.
Okay, so the, the house got a little skinnier by two feet?
Exactly.
And, and it got shorter from the backside?
Two feet from the, the east wall. Shall I put the, the, okay. This is the south wall.
Yep.
Which is originally was two feet larger, which is a push in to the, to the north. And this wall, east wall, is two feet, I shrunk it to the west.
Right. Now you cannot move it anymore to the north, because now that impacts the garage.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Impact of the garage, right.
Right. And you need the twenty feet for the garage. Okay. So we're, so we're as thin as the house is gonna get, so this is, you are, you have to have these side yard setbacks.
Is, I mean, if you shunk it beyond, you know, what it is right now, it'd be uncomfortable.
Well, you don't get the garage.
Exactly.
Let, let me just be clear. Is the, the west, the, the south wall of the old and the new house, the south foundation of the old and the new house?
This one. This one?
The south, south.
Yes.
South side of the, on the south side of the building.
That's the north.
That's the north side.
Yeah.
This is the north side, this is the south, yes.
Yes.
Is that at the same location as the current foundation of the garage?
There is no foundation under that, this is a new wall. Right, 'cause there's a driveway right now running down to a rear detached garage. So the house is gonna now go all the way across where the driveway exists.
Okay, so I guess, I mean, the response partially to you, Mr. Chairman. The garage is, can be located anywhere. It's not the determining factor. In other words, it has to be twenty feet wide.
Yes.
But it can go to the, it can be moved to the, to the north. There's nothing keeping it from moving to the north.
They can't add the kitchen and the dining room, that would be where their existing driveway is now.
I got that.
Kitchen be pushed in. If you move, if you move the south wall beyond more, so the kitchen be squeezed in, everything gonna be squeezed in. And the foyer and everything is kinda, it's not a good design.
I'm not so sure, that the area between the, between the garage or between the bedroom, master bedroom, that whole section cannot be moved and, that you cannot squeeze the family room more. And on the second floor, which is open to below, that, that foyer and the bedroom in the hallway.
At the present time, Mr. Schneider, we are below the allowable limitation, under the limitation of the code allow us. We are below, the square footage is, I don't know, about thirty-some square feet, less than what's allowable, allow us to do buildings. exclude the.
If you could exclude the lower level.
Of course.
I got it.
But we did our best to go deep, below the.
The old plans aren't in here, are they?
I guess if you, can't read that, is that eighteen on the demolition plan? Is that eighteen on the bottom? And twenty-three in the front section?
I moved away from that.
So then I'm confusing?
No, no, not as existing, I meant last proposed.
Yeah, that's one point four to.
So the original, the original house is forty-one foot six inches?
So then where's the new proposed?
And then the.
One is fifty-three feet.
And the other one's fifty-three. So it shifted over, right?
Nine.
It was the weather. Originally, it's a forty-one, six inches, yes, correct. Okay.
The original application, the original request, the, there was a, a variation for the requirement that an attached front loaded garage be located minimum five feet behind the front facade.
Be matched on. This, this was, I think, it was a mistake. We, because I pushed the garage six inches back to the east, now is, instead of five feet, I have five foot six inches.
That is in compliance.
Remind me, how much, how much out of compliance was it previously?
Oh, like, a couple inches.
It was, it was nine hundred some feet, wasn't it?
A few inches. Finished.
All right.
This is.
Yeah, existing, it is. So I, I have a quick question for you. So, you know, getting to how you changed it to the setback issue? All right, you say you shrunk it by two feet from?
South wall.
From the south wall you moved it.
Yes.
All right, so I'm looking at your plans from your last proposal?
Yes.
Which is on page one point eight?
Yes.
Okay? And the width, if I add up the dimensions, I've got twenty foot, eighteen ten and fourteen six, it looks like, right? So that's, what, twenty, thirty-eight, forty-eight, fifty-two, well, fifty-three feet? In width?
It now is fifty feet, yes.
Fifty-three, okay, but this.
No, fifty, at the present time, now is fifty.
This says on one point one nine, which is your proposal, it's fifty-three feet two inches, so it's still fifty-three feet?
No, 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 no. You're looking for the wrong. You are looking. You are looking, uh, Miss Roberts, Miss Roberts.
One point one nine.
Check this very carefully.
No, one point one nine, it's still fifty-three point two feet.
At the top of the page, it says fifty-three.
You haven't shrunk the width of the building at all.
What?
So I have, so this is what you proposed last time, and it was one point eight.
It's twenty feet.
Plus?
No, I'm talking about this is twenty feet.
Okay, I'm talking about this width.
No, it's eighteen.
Okay, but I'm talking about this whole width.
Yes.
Okay, adding these three dimensions together, it's fifty-three feet and change.
Okay, that's maybe, that's maybe error, I'm just talking about, this is eighteen feet.
But now, one point one nine, it says fifty-three two here.
But it also, the bottom adds up too. So your garage, if it's fifty-three, would only be a sixteen-foot garage.
If you, if, yeah, so somehow this isn't right.
No, the, this plan is correct, the, this dimension is correct, but this fifty-three, it should change to fifty, because right now, this is eighteen feet. If you look at here, it's twenty feet.
So eighteen.
It's eighteen eight.
Oh, this, this is a, this is new.
So this is eighteen?
This is, this is a new.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna do some math here. So this is fifteen feet six inches, or eight inches.
Right.
Plus nineteen feet six inches, plus eighteen.
Right.
Is fifty-three feet.
Okay.
Okay, but how did you lose two feet, if your original plan was fifty-three feet and this is fifty-three? Yeah, it is. This is what you proposed last time.
I'm sorry, may I?
Yeah.
It's twenty feet.
So you took two feet off here, but you added two feet in the middle? Because this says.
Because otherwise, the square footage would not change.
So, well, you, you brought in two feet off the back, it changed it, so you, okay, I understand you're saying that this dining room section right here was twenty feet, now it's eighteen feet.
Exactly.
I agree.
Right.
Okay, but now the middle section, you say was eighteen feet one inch, but now it's nineteen feet six inches.
Okay, you know why? Because this wall, the amazing wall, which is existing, previously was added to the basement, now is added to the addition. Because we put in a second floor on top of it.
Mm-hmm.
So this, if I, I submit it to existing plan to, uh.
So that's why this dimension changed too, from fourteen feet to fifteen feet?
Yes.
Okay, but they still add up to fifty-three, no matter, e- even moving that wall around, it still adds up to fifty-three?
But the square footage, uh, is, is less than, about two hundred seventy some square foot, less than a few years.
Is that just for moving the wall in then? From the back forward?
This wall moved two feet in, this wall moved in two feet.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh.
And then we just recalculated this.
This was one foot, if you look at the previous plan.
Right.
One foot was extended.
Right, you just, yeah, you measured it.
Flushed it.
From a different place.
Exactly.
I understand this. I understand this, but I don't understand how we're.
The floor area is showing, the front piece is still twenty feet, and it's just the back dining room that got narrower.
So you didn't move, you didn't move this way, you moved this wall this way.
No, 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 this is, I moved this wall, I moved this wall, uh, towards the, because if you set back, it used to be six feet, now it's eight feet.
No, the original plans show eight feet.
No.
Mm, they do.
Original plan?
Yeah, the ones that were previously looked at.
Hundred percent.
This dimension is up to the side of the wall, it's supposed to be inside, but it's not the same, I guess.
Goes bigger.
No, this is eight, unless it's a smudge six, but it's, it looks like an eight right here, that number right there.
Look, that's existent. No, it's, it's six feet. And then previously, we requested the variance.
Mm-hmm.
From six.
Mm-hmm.
We had them six feet, now I questioned, is eight feet my plan?
Okay, well then.
Your old plan shows, your old site plan even shows fifty-three feet, and it's still fifty-three feet.
One point one eight.
Sit back to this to the south.
That says eight, but even, even if you did say six, if you add this number, this number, and that number, it's over fifty-three.
Look, look at one point.
And if you add these together, it's over fifty-three. So you didn't shrink this, I think, like the chairman said, maybe you moved that over a little bit, but you didn't move this wall.
No, no, definitely we moved that wall, we checked.
Look at, look at the, can, can we check, Mr. Chairman?
The site plan says, has said eight feet the whole time, which is why some, there was some question about the calculation.
Yeah, one point one eight.
But, um, if, if it is, so.
Dimension on the bottom is fifty point, fifty and two inches, right?
The dimension on the bottom is fifty feet two inches, yes.
I did not, because it shows eight feet, which is what we had calculated originally.
Is that eighteen or is it?
Eighteen, I hear.
Originally, it was eight feet, and so we calculated it as a three point one three foot combined side yard variation. And I think I asked you by email if, if that had changed, and I did not get any response to suggest that it was different.
They're different dimensions, they add up differently.
Is that eighteen or sixteen?
Well, using an eight-foot setback, it's still a three point one three foot combined setback variation.
The square footage, the square footage.
That'd be fifty, that'd be fifty-four or four.
Is less than.
Right.
It's two hundred some distance.
I, I agree that it was two hundred and thirty, yes.
I don't understand the, so, look at the twenty-one, right, twenty-four, here.
I did squeeze in two feet.
I mean, that doesn't match up with the front, so what, what are they doing there?
Some error in the, the dimensions.
Right? Well, that's what we're trying to figure out based on these drawings, like, as you look at the foundation drawing, you know, it says it is fifty feet wide in the front, but if you add up these three numbers, this, we can't tell this number though, which is a problem, we can't tell if that's an eighteen or a sixteen. If it's a sixteen, then it gets closer to your fifty-foot dimension in the front. But it, but we can't, it's all smudged up, I can't tell if that's an eighteen or a sixteen.
But if the first one's sixteen, the second one is, I mean, it's the larger.
Yep.
This is larger, of course, this, uh.
So fifteen six, and then this has to be eighteen six?
Eighteen six.
Plus twenty?
That was already, now it's eighteen.
Existing and new additional foundation, one one eight, this is your new plan.
This is, this is not the new plan, the new plan is twenty feet, eighteen feet.
It should be, but, so, the new ones, is this the old one?
No, that is, that is the new one, this is the foundation plan, but on the, on the first floor plan, it shows the eighteen feet.
Right.
So maybe a typo.
Maybe typo here, is that what we're saying?
Maybe, yeah.
So that should be eighteen, oh.
Forgive me, see the line here? I pushed this in, but the.
The line didn't move.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's my fault.
So, okay, so this is a problem right here, okay. But this one across the front, there's fifty foot two inches.
That, it should.
That should be the correct number.
Correct number, yes, yes. See, if I, it's my, my, uh, error, sorry.
Okay. All right, we got that figured out.
But it's showing.
So we're, so we still got, so what he's saying is, see how this is.
But the found, yeah, it shows the correct dimension here.
Yes, yes.
For the foundation, but the first floor isn't right, somewhere.
Dimensioned, but I didn't, I just moved the building, but didn't dimension it correctly, see this.
So what about one one nine, the next?
But then, but you didn't move, you didn't alter these plans to reflect it.
The dimensions at least.
Yeah, dimensioned, but the square footage is the, uh, correct, for this, based on this calculation. So.
It's okay, it's all right.
Apologize.
It's all right.
So how wide is?
So here, here's my question.
This is eighteen.
All right, you know, we're gonna say.
Okay.
That dimension is correct, this is.
These are, if these are correct, that adds up to fifty-three as well.
Um. We could request, they, they will have to wait for the corrected plan.
It does.
All right.
The other thing is, not the muddy waters, but the setback is actually mattered to the overhang, which is not shown down here.
Yeah.
So.
I should, the calculation.
Yep, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep. Yes, no, I appreciate you adding that.
Okay, so there's, so there's.
But the foundation.
There's the arsonist, so.
I should, usually when I come to the meeting, I bring the, the largest schedule on, that's what we do in the past.
Okay.
Well, but unfortunately, because we've been working on the zoning almost ten months.
I know, and you're not gonna be.
And fifty-four inches.
Yeah, you're not gonna be happy with what I'm gonna suggest, because the way that, the way that we, um, move forward with this, if we were to move forward with it, is we're gonna recommend that this go forward as the plans are submitted. And the plans that you're submitting are wrong by a few dimensions here, right? So I'm gonna suggest, if, unless somebody else on the board has something else to say about it, I'm gonna suggest that we get these plans corrected. And at our next meeting, in two weeks, you resubmit, so that everything's right, so that we can move forward with the right plans, okay? But let me, before, before we move forward from that, I wanna make sure there aren't any other questions about the proposal that we need to address with them before we just wait for new plans.
Are we gonna have any, um, we're gonna stop now, and based on, based on?
My thought is, let's, it, let's get past the plans, all right? That, we know that the dimensions are wrong with the plans, we're gonna make the assumption that, um, you know, what they're telling us, the, the eight-foot setback, uh, the combined yard setback, the, um, the overall FAR, which are probably two of the bigger ones that we're struggling with here, are related to the wrong plan. If there's something else about this that we wanna discuss, we should discuss it and have that done, so that when they come back, if there's anything else they need to address, they're aware of it, so that we don't send them away again the next time.
I, I totally agree, because I'm leaning in, you know, right now, I'm leaning in favor of this application as submitted. But for the mistakes.
In the plans.
In the plans.
Right.
So, as, I should say, I'm, I'm leaning for, um, approval as worded, not as submitted.
Right, so I wanna make sure that there aren't any other questions that need to be answered now, so that when they come back to us, all they're doing is submitting the proper dimensions on their plans, so that we can move it along if it's gonna get moved along.
That would be a benefit to them, for sure.
I would just say, I, for one, I don't see the hardship for the area variation, so.
The floor area.
Floor area variation.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm on the fence with that. I mean, those windows, when you drive by, they're much nicer than, most basements have a window well, those, you've got large windows for that space. No, 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 I'm saying what's there is, is.
Is like a standard window.
Is like a standard window.
Yeah.
Most people, if they had a basement, it would be a window well.
So what you're saying, you're, you're saying that the, the area that they're referring to as a basement, which is a lower level on a split level house, is living area, and should be counted?
Well, I mean, from, from.
Mr. Schneider saying.
Yeah, and from the plan, I mean, it's, it's not treated as a storage or a, a non-used area, I mean, it's wide open to your foyer, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna finish it to make it look nice, you're not gonna walk in the foyer and see.
So it's living area, so it's counting as FAR, but you're asking us not to count it as FAR? Okay, now here, let's move back, so we speak into the microphone.
Let me, so.
I'm just voicing it now, so we.
Right, but that, so, by that argument, if he filled in that space and he, he didn't have anything.
Yeah.
You, you'd be okay with the application, I mean, then the, then the floor area issue goes away. And the way I say that is, we, we've looked at, and there's, there's no precedent, um, set with any decisions we make, and all the houses are unique, and all applications are unique, um, that's my disclaimer. The, when we look at historic homes that are built, uh, higher, right, and their, their basement underneath the, the property, not in a bi-level situation, they're four feet, you know, the basement's four feet high, we offer relief in those situations.
But generally, but the depth of those basements is often only six feet.
Not, not in all cases.
True, but in.
There's a living space.
They've been just at, you know, they're not really usable like this space is useful.
Well, I would look at this as, as a, as a typical basement, if you have the headspace, you're gonna finish the basement and use the space. And, and, in a typical home, in a typical setup, like, you know, American four-square, if you have an eight-foot ceiling, I'm finishing that space, I'm utilizing that space for the family, right? There's a crawl space and a lower level, which is the basement, and it just happens to be, it's finished space, to me, it's the exact same situation, however, they have let much less space on, on the ground.
I would, I would, they, thousands of houses have been built, split level houses have been built, where that lower, that, that quote lower level is, is either a family room or bedrooms and so forth.
Absolutely, that's, that's the design of the bi-level.
That's right, that's right.
Hundred percent, for sure.
And if you, if, if you had a house that was built before, I don't know when, nineteen thirty-five or something, and you had the ceiling of the basement six feet above grade, the limit is five feet for those houses? If it's more than five feet, let's say six feet, it would count as space, because you have only five feet below that. This is a similar situation. Today, the requirement is four feet for newer buildings, it's four feet above grade. If the, if the ceiling is higher than four feet above.
I, no, I, I understand all that, but.
And I, I can't, well, anyway, I mean, the, the, you see these split levels all over the world.
Right, but my issue is, if I have, if somebody can have a four, a four, American four-square basement and finish it and not be counted in, in FAR, this is a home that was built at a certain time period, a certain style, they don't have a full basement, the rest of it's crawl space, and there's only a half of this, this, this area that's underneath the, the existing home, that's being caught because of the style of the home. There is no other basement, this is it. So I, I believe that, I, you know, I, I feel that the square footage shouldn't be counted.
Let, let me, let me ask if there's somebody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case, let's get some neighbor comments if they're interested in making these comments, so that everything is on the table that we need to have discussed, to see what they need to address to come back to us with, okay? Now, I'm just, all right, so, would you like to have any say?
No, no.
Yeah? You're the immediate neighbor that, if, if you're gonna say anything, I need you to come up to the microphone, I apologize, but, okay. All right, so where we are right now then is, we're, some people are for, some people are against, it's hinging on the FAR. And I need you to come back with new plans, I don't know, um, or not new plans, but amended plans with the proper dimensions. It seems that we've got a board divided on the vote.
May I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Mr. Boyer has mentioned exactly same, same situation. I used to live in Lincolnwood, back in thirty years ago, now I'm in Northbrook, I had a bi-level, split level, and I made addition, big addition, and never basement, because considered as it done like a building was built forty-eight, fifty years ago, I never counted, always as a typical American split level building, many of them, you see. And I've done, um, many revisions and addition to those type of buildings. One of them in, in villages in, Dr. Mostofi, I did it twenty-five years ago, and never counted. And is it, situation is, I understand some of the colleagues, they're saying things, but is existing built forty, fifty years ago, things, you know, that never counted as a, as a, of course, living space, I agree, people wanna enjoy, fix it and, and enjoy it, but should not be as a.
Just as an aside, and, and I don't wanna, this is not example, but my sister lived in Morton Grove for thirty years, exactly similar kind of thing, and they created out of that quote lower level, a beautiful family room, which had a step up out, outside, and a bathroom, and it, and it behaved like a real, a living space, which it was intended to be.
Yes, it is.
That's all.
It is, it's, kids right now, it's like a playground.
Right.
But, I mean, as I mentioned, over summer is very humid, so it's not really something that we can use all four seasons. So it's, it's not really, I mean.
It's not drawn accurate.
Yes, now we can use it, but over summer, it's like, not easy.
Yeah. I guess it would help me, when you come back, is to have the elevation height of the first floor.
Sure.
And then the lower level and the different heights, 'cause when you look at the elevation now, it's.
The front elevation.
The front elevation, it just, it's deceiving that, uh.
Maybe I take this.
I think it's working against you.
Maybe I take the section.
Yeah, maybe a section that shows that, 'cause, um, right now, if I looked at this, it would look like the windows, so was it three feet?
Sure.
This doesn't look right, this looks too squat down.
Look at the north elevation.
Like this garage door, I mean, this is eleven feet here.
This is the top of the.
The garage was only six feet high.
This is, this is addition, top of the second floor, finishing. This is, this is addition, top of the second floor, finished ceiling.
Well...
This is, it says existing.
Yeah.
High of the first floor, so he's again measuring that from the grade, but...
This is top of the concrete slab on the lower level.
Yeah.
It says exactly right here.
Okay, but it doesn't, right here, it looks like, it looks...
This is the dimension.
Yeah, it looks like if this is 4 feet here, that would be 3 feet or even less. It looks like the windowsill is, is about this high off the floor. Is that really the case?
No, windowsill is about 4 feet high out.
Yeah. So then, then the windowsill, you're showing 4 feet, should be way up here, so I think if you had a section, it would be accurate.
Yeah, because the other thing that, that seems a little off is, is the height of the garage door. And maybe that's perception, but... It's 8 feet.
To the top of the arch.
All right, and what's this, and what's this? This line right here. That's 12 feet?
This is 12 feet, yes.
So this distance is 4, but this distance is 8. That, this distance...
No, this is 7 feet from here to there, 7 feet. You got another 4 for the arch.
Okay, so 8 feet here.
8 feet and 4 feet.
This is 4, this is 8. This is almost the same size. That's...
Is it done by computer? I don't... This is, this is 8 feet.
Yeah.
This is 8 feet.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is to the top of this, is another 4 feet, 12 feet.
All right. And if that's, let's find something that, you know, right here, so...
You're saying there to there is 4 feet.
So that goes to there.
7 feet, yeah, that's...
So that's there. It just, it doesn't look...
I know, but I'm gonna have a larger scale drawing.
Okay. So my, yeah, so my, my last, and I don't know that anything gets done about this, because this is the proposal, is, is you drive that neighborhood, it's all split-level houses, single-story houses. As I drove around, there was one two-story house. It was around the curve on, that I saw, that was on Hartzell. So this would be a very unique structure going into the neighborhood. And so, you know, is it affecting the...
Yeah, but there's a lot of neighborhoods like that.
Yeah, where you just get the first one.
On the west side layout, it used to be all ranches.
Now...
Now it's...
Right, so that's where I was going. That's where I'm going. Is this just the first one? Is this just the first one that's gonna start, yeah, so...
Yeah, it could be. I guess the one thing that's positive, if it, if it really holds true, is your dimension for the height is 28, 9, and you can go up to 35. So if you're, I mean, that's a benefit. If you're gonna tell us, you're really gonna keep it 6 feet lower than everybody else.
Talking about money, so it's, you know, conservative.
But that would, that would make it fit into the neighborhood a little more if the ceiling, if the roof is 6 feet lower.
Then we have up to 35 feet limitation of the...
35, I think.
What they wanna do as opposed to later.
I'm not, yes. All right, so we are, I'm gonna ask that you wanna continue this case to the 21st?
Yes.
So that you can get us the proper drawings, or proper dimensions on the drawings?
Yeah, unfortunately, you could be, I provide, I make a drawings. I'm gonna be controlling it.
Well, that's, it's, the next meeting is 21st.
So I'll, I'll meet with Ms. Roberts to make sure that the, everything is okay, and then if she okay's it, then I'll show up, yes.
Yeah. And what is the 21st, and then the 7th? So then, so it'd be the 21st, the meeting after that would be the 7th. Both of them, we, we could fit you in.
The 21st is...
Because it should be a fairly quick discussion, so...
I'd much rather...
Yeah, I know, the sooner the better, right?
The next step, I need to deal with the financial. I need to look for a loan and everything. I'd rather pass this either way.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right, so all, do we need to vote on it?
We do need a motion and voting, yeah.
So can I have someone move to continue this case to the meeting on the 21st?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Schneider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion. You have been moved to the 21st now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you don't have to sign.
You don't have to, because it's not...
Yeah, you're good.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals from Wednesday, January 3, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, microphone's open for public comment. Anybody wanna announce an event, a party, a candidacy? Seeing nobody running up there, I am gonna adjourn the meeting.